To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Klemsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Talludo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquest.
Here.
Bastido. Absent. Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. On to item three, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a written communication they would like to deliver to the council? There being none, we move on to public forum, 4.1. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed in for public forum?
No one has signed up.
And is there anyone in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign in that would like to make public comment? There being none, we will move on to item five. The 5.1, the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau item will be stricken from the agenda and presented at a later date. 5.2, results of the 2022 City of Elmhurst Citizen Survey. A city manager, would you like to do the introductions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have with us Mindy Schneiderman, who is the Assistant Director for Governmental Studies at Northern Illinois University. Dr. Schneiderman led the Citizens 2022 Citizen Survey, which was conducted between April and July of this year. She will be presenting our key findings from the survey and available to answer questions following her presentation. This is a survey that we conduct, excuse me, conduct every two years. However, with the 2020, 2021 pandemic situation, we did not conduct the survey. So the previous time before that was 2018. We have changed the format a little bit from, well, quite a bit from what it was previously when it was a 16-page survey, paper-only, that was sent out. And back, we saw the results starting to decline, and so we thought we needed to revamp the survey. And so we brought in the Center for Governmental Studies to help us with that. And not only did they help us redesign it, but they were also able to conduct the survey as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Schneiderman.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to start with some background and purpose of the survey. It was a mail survey with the option to complete online. The purpose of the survey was to determine residents' options of living in, opinions of living in the city of Elmhurst, city government services, city government customer service, and city government communications. The Center for Governmental Studies worked closely with the City of Elmhurst staff throughout the project. The survey methodology. The questionnaire had 53 questions. It covered the following topics: quality of life in the city, City of Elmhurst government services, City of Government customer service, City of, City Government communications, and then special events and programs, including the History Museum. Random sample of households in the City of Elmhurst was provided by the Marketing Systems Group, that is a survey sampling firm located in Pennsylvania. They only provide samples or lists for surveys. That's their only function. And they provided us with names, mailing addresses, email addresses, and telephone We pre-tested the questionnaire to make sure that people understood the questions and that we were getting the information we wanted. And then we sent the questionnaire out. It was mailed to the sampled households on April 26. And then we sent two, up to two reminder postcards. We tracked each household, so we know if they responded. They have, at the top of the survey, on the cover letter, which is the first page of the survey, they have an ID number. And so we tracked to see if they responded or not. If they didn't, they get a reminder postcard. And we do up to two, we did up to two reminder postcards. Reminder emails were also sent, as well as reminder telephone calls to non-respondents to bring up the number of completed surveys, because after the mailing and the two postcards, we did not have enough to do the analysis that we wanted to do. So we did the reminder emails and reminder calls as well. The survey closed on July 10, 2022, and we received a total of 609 completed surveys. That was a margin of error of plus or minus three percentage points. So when you look at national polls, wherever you get your news from, online or in the newspaper, and you see plus or minus three percentage points, which is what most national surveys obtain, that we, we had 3.9, which is very good for a survey of the scale. Okay, before I go into the findings. The data were weighted. What that is, is a statistical process that we do to make, to adjust the respondents so they look like your population on key demographics. So the key demographics that we used, and we used the American Community Survey, five-year estimates to get the population demographics. We used age, gender, race, ethnicity, educational attainment, and household income, and we adjusted your respondents so they looked just like your population, so that you could generalize the results to your entire adult population. Okay, so now we get to the findings, which is what you've been waiting for. We asked a question about, you know, how would they rate the City of Elmhurst as a place to live? And they could give an excellent, good, fair, or poor rating. As you can see from the graph, the blue is the excellent ratings, the good are the red part of the chart. So most of the ratings were excellent or good. 98.1% rated the city as either excellent or good as a place to live. 1.9 rated the city fair, and none rated the city poor. When you look at the results by age, you do find a difference. Those respondents that were over 65, 40.7% rated the city as a place to live, excellent, compared to those under 65, 64.8% rated the city as a place to live, excellent. So much lower for those over 65, and we'll talk a little bit about that when we look at the next slide. Also, there was a difference by those that have children in the household that, who are under 18. Those with children in the household who are under 18, 63% rated the city as a place to live as excellent versus those without children, 52.7% rated the city as excellent, as a place to live. So then we look at two follow-up questions. One was a rating of the city as a place to raise children, and the other question was a rating of the city as a place to retire. See a high percentage, the blue and the red, excellent, good, for raising children, a high percentage give it excellent or good. 68.6 excellent, which is really outstanding. And then another 30.3 rate, rate the city good for raising children. When you look at those that only have children under the age of 18, that percent excellent goes up to 79.9% rating the city excellent as a place to raise children. A place to raise, a place to retire, you can see is kind of split almost in half, the blue and the red, the good, excellent on one side, and then the poor and fair on the other side, the purple and green. You actually have 28.7% rating you fair and 19.2 rating you poor as a place, as a place to retire. There is a difference by those who own their home versus those that rent their home. Much higher percentage of those that own their home rate the city as a place to retire as fair or poor. That's 51.1%. Those that rent, that's on, own their home. Those that rent, 23.7 rate the city fair or poor. So a big difference there. There were two open-ended questions where people just wrote in responses. We asked them what do they like most about living in Elmhurst, and what do they like least about living in Elmhurst? The things that come up the highest are, for, like most, are the schools, access to transportation, they like that, you know, this metro, there's highways and expressways nearby. They like that there's low crime, it's a safe place to live, and they mentioned the parks and park districts. Of course, the thing that they like least, we hear this all the time, is the property taxes, they're too high. Another thing that came up was the new construction downtown, the high-rises, they like least, and then the traffic. We also asked an open-ended question about the most important issues facing Elmhurst currently. The top three most important issues, again, we see high taxes, safety, crime. This is the increase in safety and crime. People wrote in about their concern that, that crime is increasing in Elmhurst, and they'd like to see more police presence. The schools, they gave a variety of topics, basically what's taught in the school, how the schools handled the COVID pandemic, et cetera, et cetera, all different types of things. Other issues they mentioned, again, traffic, flooding, and overbuilding in the downtown Next, we asked about the importance of city government. So what I went over was basically quality of life. Now I'm moving on to city government-provided services. We asked two questions about a whole list of city government-provided services. One was importance to themselves and their household of each of the services. And then the follow, the second question was satisfaction with each of those services. So what you're looking at now is importance of city government-provided services. And of course, everybody thinks everything's important on the list, pretty much. The top ones are police and public safety, fire and emergency medical, neighborhood street maintenance repair, garbage pickup, and storm management. Lower, the lowest ones on the list were planning and zoning, property maintenance regulation, and initiatives to maintain the environment. Then we look at satisfaction for the same services. You see high satisfaction for fire and emergency medical, police, public safety, garbage pickup, recycling, yard waste pickup, and then it goes down from there. Your low services, the ones that are rated lower in satisfaction, planning and zoning, business attraction and retention, and initiatives to maintain the environment. We asked about quality of public safety services, and all the services we asked about pretty much received high ratings. The lowest ones are for parking enforcement, or nuisance enforcement, parking enforcement, and local traffic law enforcement. But even those are rated pretty high. We also asked about quality of street maintenance and repair services, high ratings for condition of walking paths and bike trails, for the appearance of median and parkways and parkway trees in their neighborhood, slope, snow plowing of neighborhood streets. The two lower ones are the condition of street pavement and curb in their neighborhood, and the condition of the sidewalks. Lastly, we asked about overall quality of the services provided by the city government. You receive 88.9% excellent or good ratings for overall quality, 26.1 excellent, 62.8 good, 8.7 fair, and 2.4 are rating the overall quality of services poor. Moving on to customer service, we asked whether they contacted the city in the last 12 months, and if they did, they were asked the series of questions about their experience with that contact. 72.8% rate their overall experience excellent or good. We asked about how knowledgeable the staff were. 84.2% indicate the staff were knowledgeable, 90.6 report the staff was courteous, and 88.9 state the staff responded in a timely manner. We next had a series of questions about the information about the city government. And the graph here shows two questions combined. So we asked, what's their main source of information about city government? Those are the red bars. And we asked, what's your most preferred source of information about the city government? And that's the line, hard to see, but the blue line going through the bars. 61.5% say they receive information about the city government from the front porch newsletter, with 24% stating it's their most preferred source. You have a high percentage saying they get information from family, friends, and neighbors, 53.8. That's both a positive and a negative. It's good that people are talking about the city, but that shouldn't be one of their, you know, they should be getting information directly from the city and not from people, other people. The city website is high as well, 42.5% have that as one of their sources. But their preferred source goes down really quickly. That line kind of drops from that 24% from the front porch all the way down. 32.9% who have lived in the city less than five years say they do not receive information about the city government. That's a fairly high percentage. One-third say they do not receive information. That could be because they don't know where to look for information, or, you know, they just are too busy settling in and adjusting to actually care about such things, who knows? But anyhow, so that's, that's an interesting finding. When we asked with overall satisfaction with the job the city does in providing information to residents, 92% are satisfied, that's, oh, sorry, are satisfied, that's both very satisfied and somewhat satisfied, the blue and red portion of the pie. Only 8% are dissatisfied with the job the city is doing in providing information to residents. We had an open-ended question that asked for suggestions to, on ways to improve communication, and of course, they want more frequent communication, always want more. Improve the website, which I believe you've already done, and increase awareness of communication methods. A lot of people, when they saw the list of different sources of information, possible sources of information, they, they, they were like, wow, I didn't know this, you know, there were so many sources of information that the city provides so many different methods of communication. Need to increase awareness. Okay. We asked about community events, and 83.7 rate the overall quality of the community events in Elmhurst excellent or good. We also asked about the Elmhurst History Museum and likelihood to visit the museum in the next 12 months. 37.6% say they would be likely to visit the museum. 10.3% very likely, 27.3 somewhat likely. And then you have 52.5% that would be unlikely to visit the museum. And the reasons they give for not visiting, there's a variety of reasons, they're not interested, no time, exhibits and programs don't interest them, they've been there already, done that, and been there, done that is how some of them talked about it, and not aware of the museum or what it has to offer. So those are pretty much the, the main findings. There's a lot more information in the, in the report. Some conclusions, I would say your respondents are satisfied with the City of Elmhurst as a place to live, though almost one-half of the respondents do not see the City of Elmhurst as a good place to retire. The city government is doing a good job at providing public safety, fire and emergency medical, garbage pickup, and recycling services. These are the services that are rated higher importance but lower satisfaction, higher importance but also higher satisfaction, sorry. And then neighborhood street maintenance and repair and stormwater management are services that, according to your respondents, need improvement. These are areas of high importance but lower satisfaction. Respondents believe that there's overbuilding in the city. Most respondents who contacted the city government were satisfied with the customer service they received. They felt the staff was knowledgeable and courteous, and the staff responded in a timely manner. And respondents are satisfied with the job the city does in communicating with residents. Again, the, the ones that have lived here less than five years say they don't receive information about the city government. That's something that, that needs to be further looked at and addressed. Most respondents rate the overall quality of community events in Elmhurst excellent or good, and the likelihood of visiting the Elmhurst History Museum is low. You really have a core group, I mean, there are some people in, when they talked about the museum, you know, were real history buffs and love it, and there was others that just were not interested, you know? So to come to see exhibits, you know, they're not going to come. But for events, you know, that, that might bring people in. So that needs to be looked at as well. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Schneiderman. It's certainly important for us to keep our polls on how our residents feel about how we're developing and operating the city. Alderman, questions for Dr. Schneiderman? Alderman Hill.
Yes, Doctor, could you tell me, do you have a sense of the response rate over the last few years? Has it been trending a particular direction? I saw we had about, about a 25% response rate on this survey.
We do not look at response rate. The two key things are that your, well, your survey is reliable and valid, meaning that it's, if you did the survey again, you'd get similar results, and that's that plus or minus 3% that I talked about earlier, percentage points. So your, your results will only differ by approximately 4%, plus or minus 4% if you did, do the survey again with a different group of residents. And we also look at how representative your respondents are. And because we adjusted the, the respondents, they're representative of your population on key demographics. We also look at, you know, other things to make the valid is whether the questions aren't biased, and we use the, you know, strict survey research rules and, and to make sure that the questions aren't biased. So we, we use that as, in the survey research industry, that's what's used, not response rate. I know everybody learns about response rate and how important it is when they learn about survey research, but, but that's not the key thing. So we, we don't look at response rate, and also, the, the 25% is actually, what you're saying, 25% is actually higher because we have undeliverables. We have people that, that opted out, that said, I don't want to do the survey. People said for health reasons, for other reasons, they just didn't want to do the survey. So we had people that opted out, et cetera, so. But we, we, we do not look at response rate.
Thank you. Other questions? Ah, this side has the questions. Start with Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, I noticed in here in the report that there were some breakdowns by ward on the responses that people got. Would it be able, would we be able to get this entire survey broken down by ward? Because I think it'd be helpful to us that represent different parts of town to sort of understand the concerns of our particular areas.
Yeah, what's, just so you know, what's presented in the report, are those differences that are statistically significant?
Right. I understand that part of the area would be wide.
So where there's differences between wards? But yeah, I mean, I could do it. I, I can break it down by ward. I mean, I'd have to look at it a little more closely to see whether we have enough responses for some of the questions, but yeah, I could do it.
Honestly, I don't even need a statistical breakdown and all analysis, I can do that. But just in the appendix C, there's like 100 pages of individual comments. If we get those that are associated by ward, that'd be extremely helpful.
Oh, the, the actual comments?
Right.
That's totally different. Okay, the open-ended responses. That's going to take a lot of work. We could do it, but yeah, it, it'll take a lot of work. Because they're, we'd have, we have to combine two different files and kind of figure out how to, how to get that information back together, because the open ends are in a separate file than the closed ends. But yeah, that's doable.
Thank you.
All right. I think Alderman, Talludo is next.
Thank you, and thank you for the work on the survey. This is very helpful to us and our community. One of the questions I had was regarding the rating of a city, of the city as a place to retire. You noted demographic differences in terms of owning the home or renting the home. Could we get the, a breakout? Is it possible to get the breakout based on age? And my question being, do people feel it's not a good place to retire of retirement age? Or is it people who are looking to retire that don't think that they can here? Is that possible to tease out based on how the question was asked?
Yes, yes, and I looked at that, actually. If I'm remembering correctly, it was actually people that are younger, you know, but in that age group between, I think it's 39 or 40 and 55. So they're approaching, some of them are approaching retirement. I looked at it because I, I wanted to see, you know, whether, like you said, there's a difference by age. But I will, I will look at it again and provide you with that information. But if I'm recalling correctly, it was pretty high among that, that group, less than 65, but between 40 and, I think it was 40 and 64 was the, the other group.
The people thinking about retiring, and can I stay in Elmhurst?
Yeah, and, and what the reasons, when you read the open-ended responses, the reasons is, the reason is they're, they're concerned they won't be able to afford to continue living in Elmhurst. And the owners, especially because of the high taxes.
Right. That was my hypothesis.
And then also, I mean, because there's, there's no place, if they wanted to move into an apartment, it would probably cost more, you know, as well. So yeah, that, that's what they're, they're, they're concerned about.
Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, I like the new format of the survey. I think it's simpler, more actionable, and relevant. The old survey was, could be a little tedious, there was a lot of questions with that. But one of the benefits of the old survey being a standard form is we looked at trends year over year, you know, how things were changing, people were concerned about, I think, taxes, that's always up there, crime, and traffic, and traffic's usually up there too. Do you do any analysis on the trends from previous surveys to see how changes in people's concerns were? I know that one concern used to be pretty high was airplane noise, and I don't even know if you heard anything on that.
We didn't ask that question. But there are just a handful of questions that are the same from the previous survey that we can compare results. The other questions that were reworded to the extent where I wouldn't be comfortable comparing results. And I always tell my clients that, because I have a lot of clients that, that come to me with trending surveys, surveys they've been trending results for years and years and years. And I say, you know, it's fine to trend the results, but if they're not, it's not giving you useful information, actionable information, then, then, you know, you need to start fresh. And I do have a lot of clients, not only the City of Elmhurst, that decide, okay, we're just going to start fresh. We're going to ask, you know, better questions. We're going to ask, you know, better questions and get better information that we could actually take action on and use. But yeah, I mean, trending is good, but it's hard to move that needle, too. So especially on satisfaction kind of question, on questions, it's very hard to, so a lot of my clients have like goals, and they want to increase by 5% their satisfaction with such and such service by 5%. It's very hard to change that percentage and make it go up.
You want to ask about flooding? Go ahead, Alderman Plumsky.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for conducting this and presenting. It's helpful to take a look at all the specific comments and how you put it all together. So thank you. My question is focused on what is representative of our constituents, and I'm curious about the number of, it's almost 8% of people whose primary language is not English. And I'm curious, did they complete the survey in English? And if not, how, how did you ensure that people had access to a survey in their primary language? And I'm curious about the accessibility of this, for the online version, if somebody needed.
It was in English only.
Okay. So English only. So it's, is it possible that the 8% that said, well, I guess it's the census that says that for 8%? Okay. And was it accessible for, like, if the online version, if somebody uses a screen reader?
Yes, it was accessible.
Thank you.
Yes, and we did, when we make the reminder calls, if someone says they have trouble seeing, can you read me the question? Our staff are trained to actually read the question and take the responses down. So we did have a couple of people that asked for that option. So we try to provide all the different, you know, possibilities.
Thank you. And then one last follow-up. Is there, I saw that in your demographics, you know, you talk about gender, ethnicity, race, age. Was there a discussion, or do you, do you in other communities ask about disability status? And some of this has come up, not that we would necessarily be categorizing it, but even some of the comments we're getting with development downtown and if people want quick access, drop-off access, and, you know, we, it's something that comes up.
Yeah, that was not one of the questions that we had in this survey, though I have asked it in other surveys. It actually is part of a series of questions we ask about diversity, equity and inclusion, and whether the, they feel like the city is accommodating to an individual in their house, themselves or an individual in their household who has a disability. So we don't ask them whether they have a disability. But we have in other surveys, like library surveys, we've asked whether they have, you know, identify as a person with a disability, and then we analyze by that variable. So it's, we can do that, and we have done that. We just didn't do it in this survey.
Thank you.
So in the future, we can add that.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. I'm not even going to pretend to unpack how you do this, but I'm trying to get an appreciation for the 4% deviation, plus or minus. So would that percentage, plus or minus, go down if more people, households responded? I mean, how does that percentage come down?
It, yes. So it's based on your population size, so the number of households in the city, and the number of completed surveys that you receive. So that number does come down as you get more completed surveys. So for national surveys, the standard is 1,000 completed surveys, and that's the plus or minus 3%. Because that's the US, based on the US population and 1,000 completed surveys. That's, that's how, and everyone uses that. All the survey researchers use that as their standard. For this type of survey, you know, for this type of survey for a municipality, I would say plus or minus 4% is sufficient and will get you the information you need.
Thank you.
Okay, it is interesting, as Alderman Dunn points out, I thought you were going to bring up flooding. We don't, those were the big issues, you know, 10, 12 years ago, flooding, air noise, and we've moved on to other concerns of our residents. So this information in the survey will be helpful to look at current concerns. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, doctor, for your presentation, and this is going to be on our website?
Yeah, it's already posted to Board Docs. For people to view the presentation and the full survey report. And we also have a link to previous surveys. Alderman Hill asked about reply rates in the past. That's in, if you look at the 2018 survey, that chart is in there. Shows you where that's at.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item six announcements. Are there any announcements tonight? All right. Clerk Tamer?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Early voting at City Hall begins October 24th for the November 8th, 2022 general election. The hours will be October 24th through November 7th. So this time, we are going through Monday. 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. And I have just one more announcement. Chris Heron, former NBA player, will be coming to Elmhurst November 9th. Elmhurst Commission on Youth has partnered with District 205 Foundation and the District 205 PTA Council, November 9th, 7:00 p.m. in the gym. Mr. Heron's a former NBA player. He speaks about self-esteem, self-confidence and respecting yourself. He will also talk about his journey from addiction to sobriety while addressing themes of gateway drugs, prescription drug abuse, drinking and driving, as well as self-harm. So he's doing the morning presentation to all of York High School in the morning at 8:00 a.m., and then he will be at 7:00 p.m., same day on Wednesday, November 9th, to the community. And all are welcome. Invited, free, no registration required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, will you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, let me get where I need to go. 7.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 3rd, 2022. 7.2 accounts payable, October 17th, 2022. 7.3 report, case 22ZBA11WFElmhurst sign, 140 North Robert Palmer. 7.4 report, case P11, amended preliminary and final plan unit development. 7.5 report, Spring Road Business District Slay Ride. 7.6 report, Bensonville Fire Protection District, number one. 7.7 report, license agreement with Windstream. 7.8 report, professional engineering services, 2023 sanitary manhole rehabilitation design. 7.9, an ordinance amending section 7.200 entitled Water Service Charges, section point, section 7.201 entitled wastewater sewer service charges, and section 7.204 entitled Local Capital Investment Recovery Charge of Article 4 entitled Rates and Charges of Chapter 7 entitled Water and Sewers of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.10, an ordinance waiving bid authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2022 sidewalks labjacking program for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.11, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of endpoint detection and response software for the city of Elmhurst. 7.12, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of Neptune Match 10 water meters for the city of Elmhurst. 7.13, an ordinance authorizing the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois, to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program. 7.14, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of a digital crime scene scanner for the police department's use within the city of Elmhurst. 7.15, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a design build contract with Burke LLC for the York Street and Arthur Street Traffic Signal Modifications Project. 7.16, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement by and between the City of Elmhurst and Anti-Frein Services, Inc. for crossing guard services. And 7.17, a resolution approving a third extended memorandum of understanding between the city of Elmhurst and Elmhurst Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council on behalf of Elmhurst Police Officers, Illinois FOP Lodge Number 81.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either to vote against or for further discussion? Alderman Tulludo?
Thank you. 7.15.
Anything else? All right. I may have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 7.15. Alderman Hanquist with a motion, Alderman Brennan with a second. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll. Heard.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Plumsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Vostito's absent. Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. The consent agenda minus item 7.15 passes. Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance on 715.
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a design build contract with Burke LLC for the York Street and Arthur Street Traffic Signal Modifications Project.
You have a motion to put 715 before the council. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, mayor. I'll defer to the alderman that pulled the ordinance.
Alderman Tulludo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was not here at the last city council meeting when this report was approved, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the committee, Chairman Brennan, our city staff on the public works and the city engineers who worked on this. This is a intersection that many people throughout the community, but also many people who have children at Hawthorne School, Immaculate Conception Schools, as well as attend church, are very familiar with this intersection. And this is going to be a really welcome improvement to the safety of this intersection. So just wanted to thank everybody that did the work to put the information together, to put together the new design, and I appreciate the council's support. Thank you.
Alderman Tulludo, any other discussion on 7.15? Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Plumsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Vostito absent. Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. 7.15 passes. Moving on to item eight, reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Mayor Levin, a couple announcements, a couple discussion points. I want to note that trick-or-treating will be occurring here in Elmhurst on Monday, the 31st of October, between the hours of 3:30 and 7:00 p.m. On November 4th, at 10:00 a.m. at the new Center at Centennial Park, we will be having senior, the senior commission will be hosting a community conversations with me, the mayor, to talk about why people are unhappy here with retirement. I'll get to the bottom of this. So all are invited to have what I hope will be an open discussion about a number of topics that may be of interest to seniors. Also, I want to thank the Fire Department for their open house yesterday at Fire Station Number Two. It's always good to get our community involved with our public safety people. To issue things, one is political signs and other signs. I want to remind residents that the parkways are not private property, they're city property. We had a number of calls from people about signs in the parkways. We try to contact if it's a political campaign to let them know not to put them in the parkways. I think a lot of it is just people going out and putting them there. This does not apply just to political campaigns. It applies to any kind of, I think it's, there are a few exceptions, like a yard sale or something where it's permitted for the weekend. But I want to emphasize signs otherwise do not belong in the public parkway, and we will be taking some steps to clean up the parkways. I also want to note that although under the new sign law from the Supreme Court down, you can put signs in your yard, we do not regulate when political signs go up or come down, but we do regulate the size of them, and if it's not the standard-sized political sign and you have a giant sign in your yard, those are not permitted either, and you will be asked to take those down. So information for all. Additionally, I just wanted to advise the council and the residents about the ongoing concerns about the Safety Act. This is an act which affects, goes into effect on January 1st and will eliminate cash bail, which has existed for many years in the state of Illinois. There's a lot of, I will say objectively, there's a lot of confusion about the law. There's confusion about, on one hand, we're hearing that if someone is causing a problem at a business or a house and the police arrive and say, you advise the person to leave. If they don't leave, they will certainly get a ticket, which is standard practice, but the confusion is whether that person can be removed or not by the police. And I think we'll get more guidance on that before the first of the year. There's a number of issues about which kinds of crimes qualify for bail and whether it's a consideration of a danger to the community or to a specific person. The city manager, and I have talked about it, he sent out today to council members a number of different sources, including a bulletin, points from the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, which our own Chief McClain is familiar with and has discussed with me. There's some points from our state's attorney, Bob Berlin, that show the state's attorney's perspective, which is a little different. There is a piece from the Illinois Criminal Justice Authority, which, since I was the deputy director, I find to be the most credible. And there's also some, well, actually, those I think are the key sources. So we will become familiar with those. I've taken the opportunity to write to Speaker Chris Welch and express our concerns that these issues be addressed before the first of the year for the benefit of our community, and we're not alone in having those concerns. So I wanted to let the council know that we are communicating and expressing our concerns. Those are my items tonight. Thank you. Item 8.2, city manager Grabowski.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple reminders. Next week, we will start our budget committee, the whole meetings after our committees, which will be in this room, of course. And then we have the fifth Monday, so everyone can trick or treat. And then on November 7th, we will have another faction from Northern Illinois University here to present our strategic plan, which we worked on over the summer. And so the survey data today that we got, the strategic plan results, all get formulated into the budget, which is perfect timing right now to all kind of come before council at once. So they will be on the agenda on November 7th.
Thank you, city manager. Any other reports or recommendations? Alderman Dunn?
The city manager mentioned that we are going to be kicking off our operating budget review next Monday. We already have the KEB, the capital budget. We got that about six weeks ago. But we met, the finance committee met last week, and Director Coyle had put together a primer on some of the revenue assumptions going into this budget. And just to highlight a few of the main areas of funding, sales tax revenue, this year's expected to be up about $1 million over our budget, which is good news. We're budgeting about the same next year, $13.8 million for sales tax. The home roll sales tax, again, that did very well this year, about $1 million over budget, is the expected by the end of the year, the estimated full year. $7.6 million for that, and budgeting about the same for 2023. From the income side, the state collects the income tax on behalf of the municipalities, and then... and then through their generosity, gives some back to us. Maybe not as much as we should, but what we're, what we're looking at this year is $158 per capita, which ends up being about $7.2 million. The IML gave some guidance for next year at $151, but there's a lot of caution with that number. So we went in a little lower than that with our budget, $140 per person, which would amount to about $6.4 million for our budget. So those are some of the larger areas, and if you look at the documents in Board Docs, some of the other ones are explained there as well. But overall, good year 2022 in terms of the revenue, and I think we're expecting to be about the same next year.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Any other reports? Item 9.1, other businesses, is there any other business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Jensen, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.